Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Conson.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a question.
Thank you. Mr. Bazey, would you please?
Actually, tomorrow is 9/11 commemoration, so I would like to take moment of silence for the ones we lost during 9/11 and will continue to lose first responders from 9/11 aftermath. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to have Nancy Byers lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. At this time, we are going to go for the agenda approval with the addition of 11A. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the order of business for September 10th, 2019, regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council, and this includes the item 11A.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
What is 11A?
11A, um, everyone should have one.
It's on our seat. I didn't get one on my seat. And the Corporation Council didn't get one.
Um, okay, here's another one.
Madam Chair, did the clerk get one for record?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, at this time, is there any questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have approval of the minutes. This is the minutes from the regular meeting of August 27, 2019.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that we approve the minutes from August 27, 2019, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as outlined in item 4A.
Second? Second, my Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is public hearings and comment on agenda items. We ask that you keep this to agenda items only. Okay, next, we will do the public hea-- oh, did you have an agenda item that you wanted to comment on?
Not an agenda regarding Beirut-by-Night, the alley vacation. I'm not sure if that's where you're at.
That's coming up next.
Okay, okay.
So, this is just agenda items. Next, we have on the agenda, public hearing for the alley vacation request north of Ford Road between Outer Drive and Martha Street. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing for the purpose of hearing comments and/or objections, if any, to the proposed alley vacation of the north Ford Road? Councilwoman Hicks?
Thank you.
Support by Councilman Muscat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. At this point, we open it up to public comment. Please limit it to three minutes, and now's your time to come up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Casham. This is my brother Hassan Asham. We currently own Beirut-by-Night located 22700 Ford Road, Dearborn Heights. I want to make this brief and get straight to the point with everyone. I'm sure you're all over there about the vacationing of the alley located between Martha and Outer Drive. I can assure you it is with every intention to make the alley look better for the city of Dearborn Heights and also the residents. The first reason mainly is the alley will not be blocked, if that's an issue for anybody. The main purpose is to consolidate the area from approximately 40 square feet to 20 square feet, within city limits, of course. Vehicles will still be able to pass through without any issues. The second reason is we are having a lot of issues with cars being parked there constantly, trash, graffiti, littering, you know, things that shouldn't be happening in the alley, kind of thing. So, we strongly believe that we can eliminate any of these issues by just making some changes. The only change, you know, anybody will be able to see is a change for the better, and we'll continue to clean, plow, you know, make the city look better with you guys' help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Questions for the gentlemen here. Your plans to use that alley for any reason, for loading, unloading?
Loading, no.
Parking or anything, excess parking or anything of that nature?
Not in the essence right now, no. But any loading, what do you mean, doesn't loading?
Well, supplies, you know, if somebody could, supplies for food, you know, to supply your, to supply your restaurant.
I mean, if we do need it, yes, but unless it's a large delivery, then sometimes we do use it, yes.
Okay, so, but it won't be blocked off in any way, shape, form? Residents can go through there and...
Correct. It'll just be...
We do have a, excuse me, we do have a space behind the restaurant, so if we want to, we want to have like a big lot or something, so we, it's open. That's a difference behind the...
Behind the rest, but it belongs to you, though.
Yes.
But it belongs to you, though.
Yes, it's belonged to us, yeah.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Okay, so, I've gotten a few calls, obviously, from residents. That's one of their concerns. So, from east to west, the alley, so that's not going to be blocked, period, right?
No, no, it'll still be open, but it's just going to be smaller, smaller area to get into, basically. Just because of the high traffic of, like I said, people are coming in littering and stuff. I'm not sure if anybody has passed through by there, but we're constantly trying to clean it. And just maybe a few weeks ago, we had a dump truck just come and dump in the alley in the back, and it cost us over $700 for somebody to just pick it up. And I think by making changes like this, we can eliminate a lot of these things that are happening. But I can assure you, it won't be blocked off. People will still be able to get through. I know that's our main issue and our main concern, but I did want to address that.
Councilman Abdallah.
I just want to point out something in regards to this alley. I went there and looked at it, and the first things that I noticed, and I ended up contacting the gentleman just to get a clarification for myself. The actual alley itself currently is blocked off with blocks. There's blocks of cement. I don't know if the city put them there, I don't know who put them there. But they've been there, from what I understand, for years and years and years since they've, before they owned Beirut-by-Night. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
I'm talking about blocks, like you'd have parking blocks. So, it's already there in the alley. So, technically, nobody's been using the alley anyways. What people have been doing, they've been driving around and going through the parking lot to get out off of Outer Drive if they want to try to go around traffic, which is obviously not a good idea. But if they did, they were going into the parking lot, because the parking lot between, there's currently, there's Beirut-by-Night, there's space, and then there's a current, I don't know if it's a vacant building, but it's a two-story building. Directly behind it is where the alley is at, and that's blocked off with those, what look like parking blocks. They've been there for years and years and years. And then beyond that is a parking lot that's for them, for their building, and that's where people drive through. So, what I'm trying...
No.
I don't know what you're talking about, because there's no blocks.
There's blocks, I seen them.
Then they arrived, maybe not that long ago. It has not always been that way.
Okay, I was, I don't know, I'm telling you what I asked them.
Okay, let's, let's let the public come up and talk about it.
Yeah.
This is their time to speak on it. We're not supposed to be commenting.
Okay.
Okay, please come to the microphone. I will give you three minutes, and you're welcome to say, and we're not supposed to answer them.
I'm Scott Laser. I'm living on Far Rosetta, and I don't know really what is the purpose of this, the alleyway? Is to condense the alleyway so we can't drive through it, so it's more narrower? Is that the purpose of it, to put in curbs and restrict the flow? Is that what we're trying to do? Are we just, what are we talking about? Because it's, it's not that dirty, and if it's that dirty, you know, I've been there for 30 years or 20 years.
It's not dirty because we're constantly cleaning it, that's why. And you can still drive through it, but it's just going to be a smaller area to drive through than as both now.
Well, how is that going to benefit me? Why do I spend all that money to do that?
Also, the alley that you drive on it right now?
Yeah.
The one you pass on between Martha and Outer Drive?
Yeah.
That's ours. So, which is, we are paying taxes for that. We own the land.
So, you, you saying you own that whole parking lot?
Originally, it's for us, for the business, belong for the business. So, what we have right there, that's one of our land. We have three pieces of land, or four pieces of land, the rest is ours. We are paying the taxes for the city.
Mr. Roberts, did you have something to add to that possibly?
If you're ready for some comment.
Go ahead.
And we're not trying to close it, but we said, now it's going to be open.
What's before you tonight is just a public hearing requirement that's part of the alley vacation process. It's a discretionary move by the City Council in response to some of the questions that have been raised either by council or by the members of the public. I did distribute a map site plan of the parking lot at issue earlier. You should have had that in front of you. I've marked out in green the alley that's proposed to be vacated. I've also noted a couple green stripes at the top there where it's, there was a former alley that has been vacated that ran north and south. The reason I did that is I was concerned, I was contacted by the owner of the properties, the English Garden Properties, 186 and 90, I'm sorry, 196 and 197 in the upper right-hand corner, the northeast corner. They advised me they own these properties. They were concerned because they have an easement to access their portion of this parking lot. I was provided earlier today with a recorded easement agreement between the former owners of the property, now known as, I think it's Beirut-by-Night, and the owner of the English Gardens. That easement not only provides access for English Garden to those two properties in the parking lot, I would also indicate that, it indicates that the parties further agree to maintain and keep open a driveway running easterly and westerly from Martha Avenue to Outer Drive. So, whether this valley, this alley is vacated or not, there will be continuous traffic between those two properties. The reason I believe that this is before you tonight is because there was a development proposal, and in order to accommodate the parking requirements of the new proposal, they needed some additional spaces. Although they won't be taking any more area, and they, as indicated in their easement, they will maintain access between Outer Drive and Martha, by reconfiguring their parking spaces, including using some of the alley for parking spaces, they were able to reach their parking requirement. They are, their proposal uses some of the alley to do that. However, they're maintaining this cross traffic between the two streets according to their easement. So, when the gentleman indicated that they wouldn't be using the alley, I think they're going to be relocating that passageway between those two streets, but at least their site plan that had been presented to the Planning Commission does indicate some of the parking, required parking would be in that existing alley. The reason it's before you tonight is because if that remains an alley, obviously, they couldn't use those, that area within the borders of the alley for parking. So, they're asking you to vacate it. I would ask that if you do look affirmatively at doing this, that you do so preserving any public or private easements for utilities or for traffic flow.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
If they use that for parking, shouldn't they own that spot?
Okay.
I, I mean, you're using public property for parking, then.
What's going to happen if you determine to vacate the alley? What happens is down the center line of that alley, that property goes to the adjoining property owner. So, that's the very purpose for them requesting this.
Without paying the city any money?
Okay, there is, there is a process to vacate an alley. They are following the process to vacate the alley. They are requesting that you do this.
If I may, Council Chair, Council Chair?
Council, Council. Council Miyaki?
But, of course, it's discretionary with council with respect to this, and, and you don't have to, you have no obligation to do so. And one of the concerns Mr. Roberts and I had discussed was that the English Garden property owner had some concerns about the preservation of their existing easement with regard to this, and it was my sense that it might be good to make sure that we have some clarity with regard to that, because otherwise, we might be setting those parties up for some sort of future confrontation or litigation, which isn't going to help anyone, the neighborhood or any of the property owners.
Correct.
And as I indicated, this is a discretionary decision of City Council, and I would recommend that if you are going to be considering this, that you would preserve any existing private utility, public or private utility easements or rights of, not rights of, I'm sorry, or access.
So, let me continue, please, because I, I don't know this, and it may sound silly that I don't know it, but I, I don't know it. So, this is the process that they're going to have to follow to be able to purchase that, then, correct?
No, they get it automatically.
They get it automatically.
Yes. If you determine to vacate the...
Okay, wait a boarder, please.
Madam Chair, did this go in front of the Planning Commission yet, or what's the process with...
It was presented to the Planning Commission for special land use approval and for site plan approval. The Planning Commission, because the site, the, I'm sorry, the special land use approval required a public hearing. A public hearing was held on this, I believe, in November, November, December. Public hearing was held on the special land use. The special land use was approved. The site plan review was held in abeyance in order for them to seek this type of relief. So, the site plan has not been presented to the site, to the Planning Commission at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I have, I still have concerns about retaining the easement rights, and a utility apparently expressed the same concern in the letter here, so I'm not completely comfortable with this.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman?
I'd just like to clarify that with the different agencies that had made their conditions, they wanted easement rights, but they approved it. They were okay with it, so long as they continue to have easement rights for their utilities on all these sheets.
Do they have it granted now?
They just, oh, yeah, and right, absolutely. I would definitely be in favor of continuing to give easement rights, absolutely. But in that particular, in this particular case, through the clerk's office memo, the fire department, DPW, DTE Gas, and AT&amp;T, all four of them approved it, provided that they continue to have easement rights.
And that was my suggestion, is that you, I think the motion would be the motion to approve the alley vacation, preserving all existing public and private utility easements and access.
But then all that property goes away to private entities, and if they want to block it off later, then they can.
Madam Chair?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Go ahead, Sarah. Let's get some of the public up here, because there, please come up to the microphone if you've got any comments. It's easier to hear you.
My name is Matt Warden. I'm general manager of English Gardens, and I am a Dearborn Heights resident.
Okay, wait a boarder, please. We've got somebody speaking up here.
So, I'm general manager of English Gardens, been there 47 years, very familiar with the area. We have no objections to vacating the alley. We do have about 16 parking spots very close to Outer Drive and north of the alley. The alley is abused. There's semi trucks unloading cars back there.
Which shouldn't be.
It's overused. The alley is actually about double wide. Okay, so, a true alley is like one car wide and barely squeezed by another. This is like a double wide alley. So, I have no objections to vacating the alley as long as we preserve all access and easement agreements that are already in place. And you already heard about the easement agreement. I have a copy of the Wayne County stamp.
How many copies do you have?
Eleven.
Take them, we'll, we'll take them.
What's there to stop somebody from blocking it off once it belongs to them, though?
That's the concern we have, because then we would have a difficult time accessing our 16 parking spots that our employees use during the spring season.
So, there's, there's really no guarantee, ever a guarantee, once you turn property over to someone, there's never a guarantee that it stays open.
I would suspect, but I don't know this, I would suspect because of the fire department, those two alley, those two driveways have to remain open, but I don't know that for sure.
I don't know it either, and I'm afraid that somewhere along the line...
Any of us are qualified to know that for sure.
...it can get closed. We've seen this happen where zoning, and zoning, rezone something because someone's going to build this, and once they rezone it, they can build whatever they want. And it's not necessarily what they said they're going to build, so I have a concern with that.
Councilman Wenzel.
Mark, you're up there right now. This plan, is this the business owner's plan here?
This was the plan that was initially presented to the Planning Commission, and if I could just address one of the concerns, by preserving, by vacating the alley but preserving the easements, you are preserving the city's interest in maintaining the access, the passage from Outer Drive to Martha. That's being preserved. It's, it's not subject to somebody, some property owner, like the two of them couldn't get together and eliminate that. The city would be preserving their right to enforce access between Outer Drive and Martha.
So, is what you're saying is...
I don't know if that's clear, but...
If they wanted to close it, they would have to do this again. That's what I'm getting at.
On this plan, it shows that on the west side of the alley, it's blocked off with landscaping, completely blocked off. That's their original intent, looks like, block the alley off completely. If there's parking spaces in there, and the gentleman stated that this might be used for loading and unloading, that would completely block the alley if you had a truck in there unloading anything, and that would hinder any fire engine or emergency equipment to go through there. It's just, it's just, I don't like the idea at all. I mean...
Pardon me, please.
Sure.
So, I understand everyone's concern, but we are not trying to close the alley completely. We just want to eliminate a little bit of it. In order for these, you know, semi trucks, like you were saying, that are passing through, they're sleeping overnight there, and we're constantly going outside and telling them, they can't be here, they'll leave, but they'll come back again. And like I said, kids are always staying there, underage, and I've seen drinking bottles being thrown in the alley, and we're the ones who are picking it up. Of course, it's our responsibility. But, English Gardens will not have any problem with getting in, any of their employers. We've had, they've been coming in for years, we've never had an issue with them, and we will continue not to have an issue. They'll be able to still come in, and any residents will still be able to come into the alley. It is not going to be blocked off. I know that is a major concern. I wish you guys would just appreciate the fact that we just want to make it look better, and I believe with, by doing this, we'll be able to make it look a lot better. So, please take that into consideration before...
But by vacating the alley, it's not going to stop kids from coming there and throwing bottles and drinking and feeding.
It will, because, because we are going to put up signs saying that you cannot park here anymore.
That's not going to stop anybody. I mean, after your restaurant closes...
I don't see how that's funny at all.
And a truck driver decides he wants to pull over and go to sleep, he's going to pull, he's going to pull in there, place is closed.
How is he going to pull in a semi? Right now, he can pull in a semi.
It's too wide right now.
It is very wide. Have you been through there?
Yeah, I visit your restaurant frequently.
How many cars can you fit through that alley?
And, and the florist...
You can fit three cars together through that alley at one time, in and out.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, you're basically wanting to vacate the alley to add a few more parking spots to make it acceptable for the business you choose to do?
Correct, for the business, yes.
Okay, then that's the main thing.
We don't want to close it, I mean, my brother lives right behind there. He comes to work right through there. Why would he want to, you know, go through, go through Ford Road, make a U-turn, and come back around to come to the restaurant?
When you get done, how many cars will be able to get through there? Just one or two?
Initially, we just want to make it one.
So, if somebody's turning in, nobody can get out?
You can, but I mean, one, one and a half, but we just don't want it to be where it's three car, where it's three car entrance, you know, coming in and out right now.
Okay, thank you.
Parking lot anyway, so they can pass in the parking lot, but we're going to be using all, maybe about 10 more spaces, 10 more parking lot.
Councilman Abdallah?
Mark?
That's all what we're going to do exactly.
Mark, what is the current width of the alley currently, and what is the proposed width going to be?
I don't have that specific information in front of me. I would indicate, though, that as depicted on the site plan, which is, you know, just a draft, but...
Right.
It would indicate that there is traffic going both ways through that alley. And this, you know, obviously, this is, the site plan has not been reviewed by the Planning Commission yet. It will be reviewed by our planning consultant, and it will go in front of the Planning Commission if the alley is vacated.
So, what about approximation, then? I mean, is this going from, I'm just trying to get it understanding, is this going from, like, let's say, 30 feet to not become 10 or 15 feet? Or is it being 30 feet and it's completely eliminated as an alley for public access, specifically?
The, okay, the proposal is to vacate the alley.
It says 18.
So, that's to vacate the alley. What I'm trying to emphasize is that in addition to having an alley there at the moment, there is also an easement, a recorded easement on this property, requiring these owners to maintain access between Outer Drive and Martha. And what I was suggesting is if you're going to entertain a motion to vacate the alley, that you preserve those easement rights so that you can enforce them.
And looking at this here, it says the public alley is 18 feet. Is that how far wide it is? It shows right in the middle here, it says 18-foot public alley.
Your eyes are better than mine, I'm sorry, I couldn't read it. It is on the plan, I just...
Okay, I just wonder if that's what that meant. It looks like it does.
So, if it's 18 feet now, what is it going to go to?
Again, this is a site plan concept that has not...
Provided this amount is correct.
And we have, Council Miyaki wants to...
Yeah, if, if I may, my recommendation would be to not take action on this until you have further details with regard to this. I think that things can end up potentially being preserved, as Mr. Roberts is alluding to, but we don't really have the details to know whether or not that's going to be adequate for this body or for the members of the public who are here, or for English Gardens for that matter. So, in concept, yes, these things could be done, but in concept, the devil's in the details, and that would be my recommendation.
Okay, at this point, any more public comments? Come to the microphone. You will have three minutes. State your name and...
Who owns the trail bar? So, you own the trail bar also? So, you want to gain spaces from the trail bar, too, for relinquishing the easement?
Correct, pretty much.
So, what's the plans for the trail bar?
Well, that's, that's in the works, yeah.
So, you plan to expand the restaurant?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
So, that's where the need for the extra parking?
Exactly, that's why we need, add them more parking, or maybe a little bit more, sorry.
So, who's benefiting here?
Well, until we get further details, as far as I'm concerned, I got to know what everything's going to be before I make a decision. This, to me, is nothing, because it doesn't show me anything. I mean, I've gone and visited their great restaurant more than one time. I go to the florist all the time, and we turn down Martha, we turn down Outer Drive, and, you know, cars are coming in and out safely, so I need to know.
Okay, at this time, we still have more public comment. Please come on up. Let's let the public speak first before us.
Good evening, Zoya Abdalha. I own the property in Dearborn before, and there was an alley which wasn't used by anybody. And the city did vacate it, gave half of it to my side and gave the other half to the people so they have more backyards, and they did not charge him any money. This is a normal procedure that they do not charge if the city is not taking care of that alley and nobody is using it at all. I have question to Mr. Roberts. You went, Mr. Roberts, this went to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission had approved, I believe, special use? Is that correct?
Yes, the special land use has nothing to do with the site plan. The special land use was just required because of the type of use the property was going to be used for, the proposed use. So, the special land use is a separate consideration aside from the site plan. They were given special land use approval.
The special land use include this property, this easement?
Again, the special land use doesn't really have anything to do with easements or alleys or the ultimate plan. The special land use deals with the type of use the property is intended to be put. Under our ordinance, the intended use of this property requires special land use approval, which they have obtained.
When they approve this, don't they take in consideration how many parking spots for that area for special use? Or you just give a special use for anybody who doesn't even have a parking?
The special land use does not have anything to do with the site plan. The site plan is where you get into specifics such as parking requirements.
Okay. I, in my opinion, this should be tabled, study it more, because you need to know exactly what this alley going to be used for, if there is enough parking, if it is going to affect the traffic from one side to another. And if you give the other half to the people on the other side, are they going to be signed in agreement like them? That they are not going to put a fence in a blocket, then you have, you know, basically blockage, nobody can go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please step up to the microphone.
Madam Chair, can I say something real quick?
Sure, go ahead, please.
What's unique about this particular property is that Mr. Hashem owns all four properties that will be affected by this vacation, so there isn't another neighbor that is going to be involved in this. And if I could just say one thing about the site plan, they asked, as Mark had said, Mark Roberts said, when they met with Chip Smith from Wade Trim to present a preliminary site plan that was going to come in front of the Planning Commission, he said, "In order for you to do a project, the project that you want to do there, you're going to be short some spaces, approximately six to eight," I think he said. And the best way for you to accommodate that, and continue on with your plan, and then come in front of the Planning Commission, is to request that the city do a vacation of the alley, so we can create some more space for that. We don't do these very often, the vacation, it's been a while. In fact, internally, we had to ask Mark to assist us with it, because it had been a while since one has been brought in front of you guys.
Didn't we do one on Van Born, about two years ago, maybe?
Yeah, at the Donovan Post, right.
Okay, we have a resident up here, please, let him speak.
Hi, my name is Tim Prost, I live in the neighborhood a couple blocks north of the area in question. And about 13 years ago, I was given a present as a dog, and we're out walking through the alley almost daily, so I have some idea of what's there currently. Actually, the driveway there is, needs some repair, big holes in it. I do frequent the businesses nearby and enjoy them, the ones that we go to. There is a concern, I'd say, for anyone putting a business in there, and that is the amount of debris that's left from customers, from businesses in the neighborhood. If you were to go in the second block west of Outer Drive on Ford Road and look in those parking lots, and of the debris that's left there, I would be concerned if I was going to start another business in that area, only because you'd be surrounded by everything that the customers have left. So I think it's kind of hard for the businesses there, because the customers aren't caring enough for the businesses they frequent. Because I live in the neighborhood, it's a couple blocks north of the alley in question, we get the traffic through our neighborhood currently, which I was one stop by somebody who knew if I was, somebody was selling a house in the neighborhood. And I told them, "Well, don't buy a house on Rosetta, don't buy a house on Bonner, because they're driving too fast through the neighborhood. Those streets just aren't safe for kids." I think if you have another business there, I would be concerned, because there would be additional traffic on Ford Road. And Ford Road, around 4:00, 5:00 o'clock, it backs up all the way to Outer Drive from Telegraph. More traffic, I don't think, if you had another business there that you wanted to entertain, and they had to be there at 5:00 o'clock, they would be really frustrated, and they wouldn't have a chance to get in there. So my concern is any additional excess traffic, and if there's going to be another business, and I did call City Hall, because I had no idea what the plan was for the alley, and City Hall said that there was possibly a banquet hall going in. Well, I went online today, and just to see if there were other banquet halls in the neighborhood, and it looked like there were about six of them out there, close by.
Okay.
And so I'm wondering, you know, it's more than just the land, it's the intent of what you're going to do with it, and it's also the traffic effect for the area.
Okay, thank you, your three minutes are up. Any other public comment? Okay, at this time, do I hear a motion to close the... Motion to close.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bazey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Close the...
Put your aye.
All right, next on the agenda, we have fund transfers and current claims. Yes?
Are you going to vote to do something with this, whether to accept, reject, or table?
Normally, public hearings, it gives the council based upon input from the public to study it, and the earliest it would be on is in two weeks.
This was just a public hearing for it, it's not voting on it.
Okay.
Okay, next, go ahead. Next item on the agenda is public transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Adella?
I move that we approve the current claims and public transfers, number 61 through 643, as submitted.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Bazey?
I was looking at 620 and 621, a lot of repairs for the, some of the police vehicles. I guess 620 and 621. I guess, I've got a question first, before I make a comment. Why do we still have these vehicles? I mean, some of them are six years old with 140,000 miles on them.
We're in the process of moving these out of the rotation, so until the new vehicles are equipped, that are at our vendor, and we still need these on the road.
I guess my comment, without, sorry, Chief.
No problem.
Is that's pretty embarrassing, it's pretty pathetic, that we have our police officers who are responsible for the safety of our residents driving these vehicles, while we have department heads driving brand-new vehicles, over $30,000 vehicles. I mean, it's nothing to you, Chief, but I think this is an administration issue. It's embarrassing that we have police officers putting their life on the line for the residents, that they have to drive old vehicles, while, you know, their management, or not the police management, but the department has driving brand spanking new vehicles. That's all I got to say about that one.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Good morning.
I, you should talk to some of our police officers, or some of the officers that like these Mopar automobiles, and would just as soon drive the Dodges versus the new Explorers, but there is no question about safety, and I think for you to suggest that is most inappropriate.
It is appropriate when you have...
It is inappropriate.
They can get brand-new chargers if...
Council Chair?
Councilman...
Adella was first.
Adella?
I had a question, Chief. I mean, since I have you up here, might as well ask you yours. Number 67. This is one where we had candle doors and hardware. I was wondering, that particular one, why was that, it was requested by, why was that charged to, why isn't it charged to police?
I don't see 67 as being charged to police, unless it was some work done by DPW.
You're the one that signed it.
But it starts in general government.
It's general government.
That was, on the invoice, there was repairs to doors at the police department, and repairs to doors at other saved buildings. The repairs to the doors at the police department were charged to the police department fund.
Okay, so he's pulled it off eventually.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then, another one, just a comment on artistic lawn service. City Grass caught $18,700. I just, we got to find a solution to this. Paying, whether it's this company or any other company, every single month, $19,000, $20,000, $21,000, $22,000, we got to figure out a solution and try to do that in-house somehow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Muscat?
I have a few here that I'd like to start off with. 614...
At this point, let's stop a minute. I need someone to close that door, because it's...
614 is for the Old Orchard Pond Restoration, another $3,597.48. It's coming from the Water Department. We already allocated our portion of $250,000. Why are we giving more money out to a private bond?
That, this is incorporated with the 250.
So the amount of budget before payment should have been here, and what was already spent. And we never get that. Now, I don't know if this is already incorporated in there or not, but before, I think this should be removed until we find out, because we've already allocated $250,000 out of the water budget.
Okay, we've got a gentleman up here to discuss it.
Hi, my name is Vaughn Martin, I work with Wade Trim, and I'm filling in for Dan Brooks today. So, this invoice from us is, this is an approved budget that we had in place, and that time that you see is charged against that budget.
The $250,000?
Yes.
I need to see the, I need to see it all before I say yes to this. We already went out on a limb of putting out money for a private pond, not going to put any more out of, we just had a water rate talk just before this meeting. And until I see proof positive of what the budget was and what's been spent, I ask my colleagues to remove this, 614, from this packet.
Well, I can provide the support for the invoice.
Well, the invoice is fine, but I want to see from our records, from the comptroller, what the budget was at 250, and what's been spent since then out of the 250. And line by line, line itemized. Because that's coming out of the water budget, that everybody pays for a private pond. Make myself clear, it's private, and everybody's paying for it. So until I see all the paperwork, I'm asking my associates to look at this very carefully.
Do you want to take a vote?
We just had somewhere of trying to sharpen a pencil here, and this is a sharp pencil right here.
The maker of the motion can amend if he chooses. Go ahead, make a motion.
She made the motion?
No, I was second, so I believe it was Councilman Adella would be the one who's the maker of the motion.
Well, I make, okay, then I make the motion that we remove current claims, number 614. It's from current claims and fund transfers, as submitted.
And I was the second, so I would second the amendment. Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton again. With the condition that the report is generated for the council body from the comptroller's office that shows us that account, that $250,000 for that pond, and shows all expenditures. Please.
And what's left in that fund.
Comptroller Baz?
I got it written down, but I don't think there's a specific account in that fund outlined for...
Somebody's got to have an account for $250,000.
The invoice from Wade Trim, that they were allocated, what was it, $20,000 for their share, and they're underneath that, when you look at their invoice, in the other part, I would check in to see if we made any other expenses towards that. When you look at the line of their...
I'm not going to prove another dime for that pond.
They were authorized $25,000 for engineering expenses. They have $20,000 of it left, according to their statement. So you approve that portion of that.
Well, I know we approved the budget for this whole thing, but every time I see something, it's coming out of the Water Department, okay? And until I see where all the money was spent, I know I will not be allocating another dime to that pond, personally.
You can come into my office and we can look at it.
No, you can send it to me.
Send it to...
Thank you.
I'd like a copy, too, please.
I'd like for all of us to have an itemized copy.
Actually, give us all a copy, that'd be great. Yes. Okay, any further discussion?
I got a few more here, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Again, this is from the community development for 619 for Vista Maria. I'd like to know if this was something that's new, or was this in the budget already, or was this up and over what we already allocated, an additional $29,475.60? Is anybody here from there?
Director Hashem?
Yeah, I could talk about that. Councilman, if you look at the front page that we put in, this is from the previous year, 2018, 2019. The new budget that you approved is 2019, 2020.
Okay, thank you. I thank you very kindly for that. And then the other one is Major Streets, 642, road repair inspections. I don't know where these inspections took place. Where, it's $25,614.73, and I don't know what streets were inspected. Doesn't tell me, unless somebody can, unless I'm missing it.
So I have to review that invoice, but again, that's part of a, that's part of our approved budget for the projects, and I can provide you the support that you need.
I'd like that for, if you can, please.
I can't.
Thank you. And one more from Wade Trim, again, for water main improvements. I don't know where it's at. Doesn't show me where. I'd like to know what we're paying for, and where we're paying it for. And it's 643. I got to have this information. I'm not going to pay somebody $12,000, say, "I got, I did some study on a water main improvement, but I don't know where it's at." So if you can do that also, I'd appreciate it.
We'll also provide the support you need for that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any further, Councilman Wenzel?
Mine was on what Councilman Muscat said, 619 for the Vista Maria. I seen it was from the 2019 budget, but can you answer his question? Was that above and beyond what was allocated, or less than was allocated?
The allocation was, I believe, $30,000. Actually, that's not the full profit, they get a whole lot of money themselves, outside for $29,475.
Is that the only payment made to them out of their budgeted amount for...
The only budgeted amount for 2019.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any further discussion? Okay, at this time, we will be voting on the amended funds and transfers, current claims, minus 6-14. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have consideration of bids. This is Park and Recreation Director Hadad, the bid award recommendation consulting service for 20 to 24, 20, 20,024 Recreation Master Plan.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Adella?
I move that we concur with Parks and Recreation Director Brian Hadad, who has solicited bid proposals for the purpose of selecting a consulting firm, consulting service for the 2020 to 2024 Recreation Master Plan. They had received eight bids, and our three bids have come from Becker and Rader, Fleyce and Venderbrink, Landscape Architects Planner MC, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it is his recommendation that we award a Recreation Master Plan bid to Row Professional Services Company. The cost for the Recreation Master Plan is $14,000, as outlined in item 7A. Support?
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Adella?
I had a question for the director, Brian. So I was not, obviously, we're not, as a council, personally involved in who you select, and I didn't notice that they were not the cheapest, although I'm not always necessarily in favor of going with the cheapest, you want to go with the best, or the best bang for your buck. But I was concerned when the company that was selected, and I tried to do some research on them, but this is really more in your field, obviously, they're the ones that did the previous recreation plan, and I had some concerns there, because in my opinion, although the city of Dearborn Heights is pretty good, but we're definitely nowhere near where we need to be as far as recreation. I think we still have a lot of gaps. I still think we still do a lot of things that are, you know, 1950s, 1960s, there's not been much changes. And with that being the case, I don't want history to repeat itself. And so if this is the company that put in the master plan, the question becomes, I don't want to use the words, "Do they know what they're doing?", that's probably too strong of a word, but are we satisfied with what they've done? Or is it a case of, they gave us a great plan, but on our... us a great plan, but on our end, as a city, in terms of implementation, we didn't do what they had recommended?
Well, when I review...
Either way, I'd be concerned.
Understandable. When I reviewed the last master plan before we went out for consideration of bids, I personally did like what they had down. I don't know what, exactly what was done for that master plan, because that's before my time.
Exactly.
So, what I like about them now is that they are familiar with our city. They are familiar with where the parks are and what we have, our demographics, the diversity, all that within our city. So, that's why I gravitated towards them over others.
But I went on their website and I researched, and again, I'm not in this field, just to make it clear. You know, they're one of those like, you know, buffet-type deals. I mean, there's almost nothing they don't do. So, again, I just wanna make sure that we have the right, we have a company that has the right vision. I like what you've done so far. I mean, I'm happy with the direction you're taking us, no doubt about that, but I just wanna make sure that we picked the right company with the right master plan. When was the last one done? I know it was more than four, five years, for sure.
I think it was two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen. And out of the master plan that you looked at, what percentage would you say roughly has been implemented? And the reason I'm asking this question, I'm trying to determine, was it a bad plan, or are we not doing enough?
Roughly, I would say seventy-five to ninety percent of it was done.
Okay, then, in my opinion, and you could, I'll state it publicly, I was not happy with their plan then. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. All right, let's do a poll. Councilman Muscat?
No.
Councilman Coniston?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
No.
Councilwoman Melonowski Maxwell is a no. Councilman Abella?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
No.
Councilman Wensel?
No.
The noes have it. It has failed.
Council Chair, and the reason I voted no is by what Councilman Abella brought up. If seventy-five to ninety percent was done, and it looks that bad, we need somebody new.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on.
Thank you, Councilman Abella.
You're welcome, my friend.
All right, now we have reports from city officials. This is Fire Chief Brogan, the Stryker Service Agreement.
Point of order, Madam Chair, would you wanna pick another firm for, because we can't get grants until, if you wanna choose somebody else, I don't have any problem with that, but we'd like to get...
I don't think this is the meeting to do that, is it, Mr. Clerk? They'd have to bring that forward?
It's not on our agenda.
It's not on the agenda. We'll bring it back at the next meeting.
Madam Chair, just as a proposal, and I know they could rebid, I don't know if Brian's still, oh, there, I mean, you know, we could go out for bids again, but can we have maybe the top three that you're gonna select from here for a study session, and let's have ourselves and the residents ask questions and just see if we like the vision?
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you. Yeah, I will schedule that then. Okay, next, under Reports from City Officials, we have Fire Chief Brogan, Stryker Service Agreement.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to concur with Fire Chief David Brogan and grant authorization to enter a service agreement with Stryker to cover service and maintenance of the power stretchers and power load system and the squads. The cost is four thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars annually to be paid from the contractual services as outlined in nine A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdal. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I see on here it's four thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars annually, which is a great price for what they're gonna do, but I look here and I look at the payment schedule, and it starts off with a balance of thirty thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars, and in the first line here, it's nine-one-two-nineteen, payment of forty-three, and remaining balance of twenty-six thousand sixteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. I don't understand what all of those, it's either forty-three, thirty-six, eleven, or, because they've got, I don't understand how this is printed up here.
They did give us a discount, and I think that was the orig, the thirty thousand three hundred and fifty-two was before the discount.
Over a seven-year period.
Mind it.
Chief?
Yeah, it was thirty thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Yeah, so four thousand three hundred and thirty-six for seven years, and then it gives you the balance remaining, so that should, I didn't do the math, but I think that adds up. It's a spreadsheet.
So, you take the whole seven years and multiply it by that, and you get the thirty thousand? Right, okay. I just wanna make sure that we're not paying thirty thousand dollars for this, because what they're proposing in here is fabulous.
Right.
It really is.
It's a really good deal.
All right.
Yeah, it was thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-one before the discount.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
Chair.
Councilman Abella.
So, I had done some research on it, just trying to figure out, I mean, I know what in general the power stretchers are, but I didn't know much about them, so I started Googling and just researching it, and I, wouldn't you know, I just wanna give you guys a shout-out. The next, no, the next day, the next night, my mom, for the first time, gets taken to the hospital with an ambulance, and then I was able to witness that firsthand, and as I was walking in, I was looking at all the different mechanical parts involved in there, so I could see why we would need something like this, but more importantly, the reason I'm bringing this up right now is, I was under high, high stress, I mean, left my house in my pajamas and just totally panicking, because we thought my mom had had a heart attack, and I just wanna give you guys a shout-out. I mean, you're paramedics. I mean, how calm they were, and how they were just following it, just boom, 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 and, you know, whereas our fans are all like, ah, we're going nuts, you know, thinking something's happening badly to my mom.
Right.
And how they kept us all calm, and they stayed so professional, and I got to see them firsthand where they couldn't use this inside of a house, so they had to carry her, and just the way they carried her and the amount of patience and care they showed. They didn't know who I was, by the way, because I was in my pajamas, my hair was like this, I had a T-shirt on. They used to meet with a suit on. It wasn't until I was in the ambulance, like, ten, fifteen minutes later, and they go, oh, Councilman, it's you. So, they weren't doing it because it was me. They just did such a beautiful job, and I was so impressed with the amount of care they took with a patient. I just wanna give them a shout-out. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, be honest, Councilman, you had your Detroit Lion pajamas on.
No, no, no.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, this is Reports from City Officials, this is nine A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Fire Chief Brogan, the new heating and cooling unit in the fire station headquarters workout room.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council to authorize the installation of a new heating and cooling unit in the workout room at their headquarters. Total cost would be four thousand dollars to be paid from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation grant upon completion of work, as outlined in nine B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Park and Recreation Director Hadad. That's the renewal of contract for Mid-America Shows for the annual Spirit Festival.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abella.
I move that we concur with Director Brian Hadad from the Recreation Department, renewing the five-year contract for Mid-American Shows Delaware, and this contract will use the carnival company to provide all the carnival rides and games for the following future dates of the annual Spirit Festival, and that would be two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, as outlined in item nine C.
Sign the contract.
Second motion.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Before I open it to discussion, I also did some checking on this, Director Hadad. I don't know if you are aware of it. I went back in the archives, and I found that back in two thousand fourteen, there was a contract that was approved for June tenth to fourteenth in two thousand twenty and June ninth to thirteenth in two thousand twenty-one, so we really don't need this yet. We already have a valid contract. I have a copy, if you'd like to. It says, "It is mutually agreed upon by both parties heretofore that this agreement will be extended and remain in effect covering the twenty and twenty-one Dearborn Heights festivals unless the party of the second part notifies the party of the first part via certified mail of its intent to not exercise its opinion to extend this agreement into two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. The party of the first part will receive notification no later than August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, at the following address, post office, box four twenty-nine, one oh nine, South Main Street, Farmland, Indiana, four seven three four oh. In the event this agreement is in fact extended, it is mutually agreed by both first and second parties heretofore that the dates of the two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one festivals will be June tenth through fourteenth in two thousand twenty and June ninth through thirteenth in two thousand twenty-one, dates inclusive, so we're already covered till two thousand twenty-one."
I was not aware of that.
I knew that. I know you knew. That's why I thought I'd bring it to your attention.
The ride company told me during the festival that they needed to renew the contract. I will come grab that.
Would you like this? I can give this to you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
That's one of the notes I had on here, Brian, for myself, to discuss with you, is there should be, you know, an opt-out clause in there.
Yeah, it's in orange.
It looks like it's in that one, but make sure in the new one that there's an opt-out clause for us in it. We don't wanna be committed for...
That's still in effect. There's no need for...
No, no, but I'm saying whatever new one they make.
No, there is no need for a new one. We have one till two thousand twenty-one.
Does that include, this is the addendum. Does this, did that original contract include this addendum, because...
You've got it there. Well, see, we've already got a contract going to two thousand twenty-one. There's no need for...
I don't think this addendum is in the contract you referenced. We were talking about the Corporation Council. The addendum, I think, but...
You actually should have two documents in front of you. One of them is the agreement itself for the two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-four period, which is not included in nine C. Then you need to end up having the addendum, which we are now required in order to end up having, having to do with nondiscrimination and Title VI. This document, the other document was presented to me as being for a renewal, but it actually requires a separate agreement. That new agreement is slightly different from the other agreement, which I reviewed years and years ago, because I think one of the people who's been a proprietor is not shown as being in it, and that might be why Mid-America Shows brought it up, but that agreement...
But we already have an agreement, so there's no need to do a new one until two thousand twenty-one for the next, the following years. I mean, we've got one in place. Why bother doing this? There's, it's just...
They got it in the then number.
Yeah, but we're changing a contract we already have with them in effect, and they did not opt out of that contract.
Well, there are two...
They have till the fifteenth of August. If they wanna opt out, we bring it to the next meeting. That should be fine.
Yeah, there are two issues. One of them is I didn't review it for that purpose. I reviewed it because I was told this is what we wanna do, but the other thing is, one of the difficulties with these companies, and I don't know if that applies here, is that, yeah, you might get them for the next two years, but they're usually looking at five-year agreements, so they may not be in a position where they want to, they might have brought up that they wanna do the new agreement with the idea that they wanna have the certainty that it's gonna be extending past the two thousand twenty-one time period.
Right. I would be in favor of bringing this back and not including two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, because we already have something in place for that and continuing on after, for what, three years?
Well, I would recommend they actually doing it for the whole period, so then we can make sure we get this addendum in as well.
I just worry, we have a contract, and I don't see them wanting to...
Not if the parties basically have agreed to end up doing the new...
I see no proof of that, though. I really don't.
I can look at that issue.
And I'm gonna be careful. I'm not gonna approve this then, at this point, until it's clarified.
So, when can we get it clarified?
Well, Mr. Hadad, and I can, basically, he can, I can look at the agreement, the original agreement I looked at years ago, and then we could also potentially do the new agreement with the addendum with something that addresses the additional...
For the next council meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to see something in writing from that company, though, releasing us from that contract, because I don't wanna be in conflict with two contracts.
All we would need to do is have something in the addendum which would address that. That's, the parties mutually agreed to do that, boom, that's fine.
I don't see proof that they're...
Well, I mean, that's what he's gonna put in.
I could put it in.
Yeah, but we already have a contract, Ray. Think about it.
The addendum is our Corporation Council's suggestion to the government, city of Dearborn Heights, that this should be in the agreement. So, to not listen to, we had him review it. Gary is putting this language in, which he believes is necessary to protect the city.
But, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
But I think it'd still be a good idea, since we were not made aware of the original contract, and I'm glad the Council Chair brought it up, that obviously to review the original contract and then add this addendum, just to make sure that they all align. You can add an addendum after the fact, I do know.
Right, although the idea would be that the contracts would merge anyways. I mean, again, it's a new agreement between the same parties, covering the same period. It wouldn't be a difficulty, but I can address the issue.
This one's not.
It's not. It's a different...
Because this one's going through two thousand and twenty-four years.
The point is that that was an option to extend, all right? So, basically, that option doesn't necessarily have to go through. The parties end up having a new agreement, and we'll end up overriding the prior agreement, and I'll put explicit language into it if need be to satisfy the council.
Because the only people signing this contract is the mayor and our clerk, and I don't see the company anywhere in here signing anything to ask us to redo this.
They submitted a new agreement. No, 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 no. What the document that you have is a document I prepared.
Okay.
So, what you have is the addendum to the overall agreement. You do not have the agreement. You should have the agreement. So, that agreement, what will happen is, is Mr. Hadad and I will end up talking about it more, and essentially, I will look into the issue with regard to your concern about the existing agreement and whether or not it's adequate under the circumstances, even though we need to do something in terms of this addendum.
Right, I agree, we need the addendum, but I just wanna make sure we cover everything in that and do it correctly.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abella.
So, I'd like to revise my motion to table this until we get a copy of the agreement and the addendums, the fully...
You can refer it back to the administration.
Okay, then I'll refer it back to administration for further review.
I was a second motion.
Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Bolt Attorney, purchase and payment laptop computers for school resource officers.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to concur with Police Chief Bolt Attorney's request and authorize the purchase of two Dell Latitude laptop computers to be used by our school resource officers. The total cost is four thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents, and this comes from OWI forfeiture account, as outlined in nine D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abella. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
So, this question is for the chief. From the two school, the two school boards that I spoke to, I guess one of them approved the resource officer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so while we're purchasing two, if there's only one been approved, or depending the second...
They both will do it.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't see any reasons why they wouldn't.
Council Chair.
Councilman Wensel?
It's two thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars for each laptop. Isn't that kinda high for a laptop? Is that supporting software or something, or?
No, it meets the requirements. We, if they're gonna have access to our Clemis and Lean capabilities, they need additional levels of security into equipment.
Is it just a portable laptop, just?
I believe these are for the cars also, because they're able to put it in the car and take it out.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item is under Ordinances and Resolutions. It's Councilwoman Melonowski Maxwell and Co-Chair Bazey. This is a resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council related to the Mayor Palaico's failure to abide by the court order.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
I move the council to concur with the resolution of Dearborn Heights City Council related to Mayor Palaico's failure to abide by court order, as outlined below in eleven A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abella?
I was just, that's what I was given, just before the meeting, obviously, so we had a little time to read it, although I did get a chance to just read it, but I honestly object to the words being used in here. In three different spots, there's the word misconduct, and I just don't think it's the right verbiage to use. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mayor?
I am not in contempt of the court order. This, I think I am owed an apology from the harsh language that's in here, and I am exercising my right under the law unless this council, you and the vice chair, wanna deny my rights and follow in an unconstitutional way, but I am not in contempt, and I am following the advice of my legal counsel.
Okay, Mayor, I do have the resolution here. Would you like to sign it?
No, not at this time.
Okay, you are refusing to sign.
I've been advised by legal counsel.
Okay, I... Okay, I, point of order, let me speak. As of 5:00 p.m. today, there is no stay in place, which you would have had to have done, and there's no signature on the resolution. In the, in our charter, it says you should have signed it by the next day. You were provided with it on July 31st. By the next day, you should have had it signed, and it's not. And we've been very good in not saying anything, so at this point, we feel we need to move forward with this resolution. It's pretty much self-explanatory, and this is the next step for us.
You, I don't know where you got that. I only had seven days for a stay, but you're incorrect based upon three attorneys that have advised me...
Okay, well, then you need to, you need to talk to your attorneys.
I will do that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Am I going to get the apology?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Abella and Councilman Constan are opposed. The resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is for members of the public. This comes from comments from council members. Do we have any comments from the council members at this point?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
I have a few items. I guess I got a few calls from residents that were affected by the flooding, and they're all asking the same questions. They made claims, but they haven't heard anything. So would like to go on record to tell them what's going on, what's the status of their claim.
I don't know who would take care of that.
Madam Chair.
Claims have been submitted to the attorney that's representing the city.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't have that information unless...
Do you have anything, Councilman Miyaki?
No, I don't.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Oh, wait, wait. Councilman Bazey's still got the floor.
I have an answer, though. Something to add to yours, just for public information. The Governor Whitmer had filed an appeal, and that appeal was denied. That was a recent email we received on Friday last week. So that means the FEMA support that was denied, that appeal.
Is that just for Dearborn Heights or every one of them?
It's in the state of Michigan, Wayne County. Yeah. So it's through the governor's office.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Second item, I know there was an email. Every one of us was CC'd on from the D7. That's club for the baseball fields. I've seen some emails that was resolved. I know Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton and Councilman Muscat's been involved, so I don't know what the status on that or the baseball fields. I know Director Salmy is not here to answer that question, so maybe we just defer that to the next meeting. And I was going to talk about an item, about double dipping for elected officials. I know the council attorney in Miyaki, we talked about it before the meeting, so he's going to send us an email to the council chair and myself to address this issue. And the next item is GFL. I've been a lot of complaints from residents that when they pick up the trash, they're dumping a lot of trash. There's a lot of residue trash after they leave. So unless we have them come back or at the same time pick up the trash that they leave behind, the residents should not be responsible. We're already paying a lot of money for these guys to take the trash, so there's no reason for them to leave anything behind on the streets. And there's a lot of senior citizens that are actually cleaning up after that mess, which is ridiculous. So we need to hold these guys accountable, or we need to have the sweepers that, to come behind the GFL to clean up the garbage.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes, many, many complaints about GFL. It's an everyday issue complaint, and I urge everybody to call the DPW and register a complaint so they have it on file. Yes, I can help getting garbage picked up if they miss you. I'm not saying don't call me, but make a complaint also so it can be registered. And I've even called and complained about my street, where every single trash can was left on the street, some laying down in the street, middle of the street. Because, you know, I remember the GFL coming in and Rizzo at the beginning, they're going to buy all brand-new trucks, and they're all going to be picked up by the side. Well, that hasn't happened. So I think we should be putting them on notice. That, I don't know if we could call that a breach of contract or whatnot, but we don't have new equipment, and they don't always load them from the side. They're putting them in the front. And the other thing is, we purchased cans, two trash containers valued at $1.8 million plus interest. Now I'm finding out that GFL is not even recycling all the recycle. So obviously, somewhere around $800,000 was spent needlessly if they're not recycling. And that just, that just burns me up that my tax dollars are... I might as well just go down the road and wrap up $5,000 a year and just throw it out the window.
And Councilman Muscat, I'd like to add to that. I'm also noticing the last few weeks, when they emptied trash cans on my street, they're putting the actual can back in the street, which blocks our street sweeper from cleaning the streets.
That's what I'm saying. They were left in the street and not back on the grass. And everybody puts them on the grass in my street. I see it all the time. And as far as the baseball fields go, we had the worst baseball fields around.
Yes.
Okay? We've got a guy that's doing, the job that they're doing at Kent Field is just unbelievable. I don't think there's a city in America that would turn down a private citizen to donate that kind of work and turn him down. I just, it's just mind-boggling that we put every hurdle for him to jump through.
Nobody turned it down. The director believes that it makes more sense to do the work in the spring before the baseball season than to do it now and let the fields get destroyed through the winter.
Well, once you get the baseball field done, the field doesn't get destroyed. They don't get destroyed. I don't know where we get this idea...
Point of order, please.
Chair.
You know, I don't know where we get this idea that the ball field, if it's done right, doesn't get destroyed, unless somebody goes in there and intentionally destroys it.
No.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel?
I'm wrong.
I'm sorry. Point of order.
Six, I'm not wrong.
Point of order!
I'm not wrong, and you know what?
Councilman Wenzel has the floor.
You had to ask for the apology. Give that guy an apology for calling him an a-hole. Will you?
Point of order.
Why do you have to shout? Can't you talk in a normal tone?
What are you doing?
I'm doing it because you're doing it.
Point of order!
You owe him an apology for calling him an a-hole. Give him one. No, you won't. It's amazing you want one, but you don't...
At this point, we're going to stop the meeting until...
Amazing. This is, this is truly amazing.
You've got to stop, please. This doesn't belong here.
When somebody asks for an apology and doesn't want to give one?
Okay, at this point, at this point, this is not the place for it.
I think it is.
We have, Councilman Wenzel has the floor.
Well, I was contacted by a member of the dance club who had conversations with the gentleman willing to do this work, and he said that, he was told that springtime is the worst time to do this because right now, the ground is dry. It's easy to drive on. It's easy to work with drier surfaces. Springtime, you're more apt to get a lot of rain and a lot of delays and delay the season. Now, I know Director Hadad's here. Can, I mean, can you give us some insight on this, on this deal? Because I know it's a hot topic. It's been going on, all the emails.
From my experience working on fields when I was younger, we did a lot of things in, when I was working for the City of Dearborn. We did more of our things in the springtime because of the runoff of the field material, okay? Baseball fields are meant to be constructed to be crammed from the pitcher's mound and so water can run off. I, my thing is, I just don't want to see this material running off where we have to come back and put it back on.
Well, he said that he talked to him, and he said that this is not a one-season fix. It's made to last several years, so one winter. They're not going to have this problem next winter. If they do it next spring, they're not going to have a problem with it next winter. This is, it's made to last several years. So, I mean, he said he's willing to do the project now, and he's got, he's ordering material for another, he's ordering material for another project, and he gets a better value if he orders in bulk, and he doesn't see any reason why it should be delayed.
Okay. I will speak with Mr. Salmy tomorrow, because he's obviously not here today. So, and we'll go from there.
Councilman Abella?
Just want to say, I mean, I sent the email. I spoke with Director Brian Hadad, and I, I mean, I got the email too, and honestly, called the respective, but it didn't make sense to me why we would not allow it. But as I spoke with Director Brian Hadad, and I asked him directly, like, why would we not allow something like this? And he explained. I said, but let's just say they want to do it right now. Do you have a major objection to stopping this? And he said, no. As a matter of fact, I sent him the email, his phone number, and he said, have them call me. Be more than happy to help coordinate this. So it's not a case of, at least from the conversation with Brian Hadad, and I told him I was going to say it publicly. He doesn't have a major problem with it. It's just a matter of coordinating things. He just had a different opinion, but it's not like he didn't want to allow them to do it for free.
I mean, it's free. We're not paying for it, so if it failed, what's the big deal?
Again, I want to clarify. It was not a case where he said, no, I don't want it for free. No, I don't want labor for free. It was a case of a disagreement as far as when is the better time to do it, now or in the spring. But I said, if that's something that's very important to them, to this particular organization and the kids, and of course, it's for free labor, look, me personally, I would go do it right now. Why is that? Before they change their minds or the funds are gone. But he didn't have a major problem with it. So with that being the case, I think we're good.
Okay, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, too, had a conversation with Director Hadad. Thank you for taking my call. I think we can all agree that developing a community partnership is a good idea and will be beneficial. It's a win-win. However, I thought part of the conversation was a matter of with the union, making sure we don't get aggreviance, correct?
That's right.
And that's the piece that has to be, that's the hurdle that needs to be crossed before this can get done. I think everybody is agreeing that it should be done, and it can be done, and this person has the resources to do it now. But we have to cross that other bridge. Otherwise, we face, you know, other repercussions for not doing it correctly with the union, correct? So that's a part of the conversation that's not being brought forward here, and that really needs to be added. So the other thing I had is, just for clarification, and I don't want there to be confusion, with the Green for Life GFL contract, we pay to use their customer service department. So I was under the impression that all the calls should go through their customer service department because they give a service order number, and they do communicate with our DPW department. So I want to make sure people know, because we see it all the time, all the time on Facebook, on the community pages, well, who do I call my trash was missed? Well, you call the GFL, and the number is online for people. We post it frequently. So I just want to make sure there's clarification, because I don't want there to be confusion on that piece. And if I'm incorrect, let me know.
No, if I could just add to that, the mayor's office, obviously, DPW, and the ordinance department all have access to a shared space. So we would prefer the calls to go directly to GFL. If you don't get a response back, then call, and we can see if it's been logged into the system, make sure it's followed up on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
To piggyback on the GFL issue, I was contacted by a lot of people, and they're wondering, what's the real story about this recycling? Can they throw a soup can in there without washing it? Can they, you know, does everything have to be washed out? We have residents that take the time to recycle, and we want to make sure that their efforts are being paid off by actually recycling that material. I think we should have a representative on a regular basis from GFL come in here and answer questions, because I see a lot of recycling cans filled to the top. And if they're taking them and just dumping them in the landfill, then everybody's wasting their time. So we need to get a clarification on how, how you actually recycle something. Do you have to wash it? Can you, I know you can't put paper, paper towel. Everybody recycles paper towel, and that's not recyclable from what I understand. I think we should get some, something here or somebody, a representative from GFL to come by and have the administration make, make sure they come by here for the next couple of months, maybe, and say, answer questions, so we can have a question and answer.
We'd be happy to. In fact, this has been a topic that has come up from the mayor's meet with Congressman Dingo periodically, and we pointed out that not all the communities around here recycle, but that the efforts for recycling, and a big part is China has stopped buying recyclables. So consequently, the stream, there's more recyclables, let's say, than a market out there to purchase it. So that came up, and we asked the Congresswoman if she could intercede and get Washington to help us out, because this is really, and I think 60 Minutes did a report on the same issue. So that is a difficulty. We have met with GFL because I think recycling is extremely important, and I recycle to the extent that I can. And we certainly wanted to look at avenues that would allow us to recycle, and GFL is looking at those for us.
All right, thank you. I have a couple other things. I know the soldiers' cross out in front is still not repaired. Mr. Gavin, can you, I mean, when it was originally vandalized, was there a police report made? Or is this something we should, should turn into an insurance company, or, or what, what's, can you give us an update on that?
There was a report made. We've been in touch with Nick Froden. He's supposed to be in town this week. He's up ready Tuesday. He hasn't been here, but he had a couple jobs in Michigan, and he said he'll be here and he'll give us a call. The gentleman over there has been in contact with some people, so they're promising us, promising us they're going to be here.
Okay. Well, it's been, yeah, they've been promising for a couple of months, but I hope we get it, get it done soon, because it is ice or out there. And the 5G, it's a big, hot item. I mean, I think we should, as a city, we should do everything in our power to not let this happen in our city. I don't know what to do. We're getting all kinds of emails. All of us are about it. And it's scary. It's a very scary situation. And I know this, people say there's nothing we can do, but there's never any, nothing you can do. You can always do something. And I think is, we should keep, put our heads together and figure out a way to stop this. And, I mean, I don't need 5G. I'm fast enough. I don't need self-driving cars or whatever. I mean, it's, it's something that they're putting on us that I don't think we really need. And the health issues, the questions are, I mean, do they have enough insurance, these cares, to have a billion-dollar lawsuit against them over the course of a few years? I mean, they come in here, put these antennas. Are they, are they going to be covered, you know, I mean, with the right amount of insurance for it? Too many unanswered questions right now. And also, the pit bull issue, there was another incident with the pit bull. I mean, we ban chickens in Dearborn Heights, and I don't think a chicken's ever killed anybody, but we let pit bulls in. I mean, I'm not a dog hater, but, you know, it's pretty obvious the situation that's going on with these dogs. Jack, and maybe we should have a study session on that. I know it's a real hot, hot subject. And then the flags outside there, we have, our flags are in bad condition. We're promised to have the flags replaced. I don't know what's, who's in charge of the flags? Is that building and maintenance?
Director Salmy. He, we haven't talked to him. He's supposed to replace them.
Are they going to be replaced?
That's what we were told.
And there's the flag on the cell tower at Swapka Park. It's still, I mean, who do we talk to about that? I mentioned at the last meeting, I didn't get any response at all on that. Is that, is that, Mike, is that a building and maintenance, or is that recreation, or who's that in charge with?
With the flags?
Yeah.
Building and maintenance.
Building and maintenance. Can you look into that cell tower at that Swapka Park? Is that original contract, I was on the planning commission when they allowed that cell tower, and when the agreement was to supply and maintain an American flag on that tower?
I'm not sure about the cell tower.
I can look at the site plan, and if that's the case, we can enforce that.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's it.
Any more?
Yeah, Councilman Wenzel's correct, and that is the company's responsibility to have the flag. And it's a huge flag, but it got thrown up and hasn't been up in years, I don't think.
Also, too, I have a question. I don't know who can answer this. In regards to the tree lighting ceremony, our tree has been cut down. Do we have any plans to plant a new one so we can have our tree lighting, our annual tree lighting ceremony?
Better plant it quick.
It might be a little small.
Won't need much lights.
Does anybody know, Mayor?
The last tree was donated by a resident. If there's anybody out there that has an Evergreen that they'd like to donate, we would, as we did the last time, pay for the cost of having it moved to City Hall. And we've had discussions. We haven't come to a conclusion yet.
Okay, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I was going to add, I thought that Deputy Director Constan had something she was working on as a ceremony out at Warren Valley Golf Course, correct? So are you able to share with us?
I think trees there, but big enough.
Yeah, I mean, I thought you had this wonderful plan that you had shared with us, and that would be what would take the place of what we have been doing here at City Hall.
Yeah, I remember that. We were talking about that afterwards, after the ceremony, because the tree looked so bad getting through the whole ceremony. And I was thinking, since we owned Warren Valley now, it would be the perfect place to have it. And before Mr. Hadad was hired in, I went out to Warren Valley. I looked at the place. There are a couple of trees that we could use this year to get through this year, but no one has asked me.
Okay, thank you.
We're asking you.
Yes, we are.
Looking to it.
Okay, any further comments at this time? I will open it up to public announcements. Please limit it to five minutes.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to make a couple of quick announcements. First off, Tuesday, September 17th at 7:00 PM at Carolyn Candy Library. Join us on a journey into Michigan's past. Storyteller Judy Crassnow will be speaking on fascinating fun facts and tales that include legends and lakes, loggers and lighthouses and more. And speaking of journeys, Wednesday, September 18th at 7:00 PM at Carolyn Candy Library, join Larry "Dr. Trek" Nemesek as he talks about Star Trek creator Gene Roddenberry. Sharing letters and memos from family files, Larry will reveal how modern Star Trek can be as inspiring, reassuring and issue-driven as ever. Should be a blast. That's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you. Any other, any other public announcements? This is a community announcement time?
Good evening. My name is Gary Barkov and I would say I'm the former director of the District Seven Dads Club. I has, I have resigned as of September the first, but I'm also a lifetime member. There are in the Dads Club, five lifetime members in the 65 years of existence. There was seven, but Pete and Pat Stevens have passed away within the last 10 years. About this email, I was called, that's why I'm at the meeting tonight. Is it public knowledge to say what was in this email?
Yeah.
Because I'm puzzled after 44 years of being in the Dads Club and the director, I have no knowledge of this.
Get you a copy of it. I'll get, I'll bring a copy of it over.
Yeah. We can get a copy.
What I was told on the phone by one of the other lifetime members, that a gentleman here in the city of Dearborn Heights would like to donate to fix up the two fields at Swapka Park.
Correct.
The baseball fields.
Right.
Okay, no cost. Would that funds be going through the Dads Club or would that fund, the funds he wants to donate be going to the city?
The funds will be paid, will be used to pay for the renovation of the ball fields.
Okay.
So, it won't be paid to anybody but to the people that, that actually, a company that actually is going to come in and fix the ball fields.
Doing the work.
Yeah, he's going to supply the company that does the work.
Out of his own pocket.
Out of his own pocket and pay them directly.
Okay, terrific. My recommendation would be after seeing those fields for the last 40-some years, week after week, day after day, coming into the spring, it's a disaster. Those, the kids get on their scooters, go through that. They get on their skateboards, they go through there. It's a mess. I would definitely wait, if he wants to invest that kind of money, to wait till the spring. There's nothing going on right now. Their fall ball was only two teams and that should be ending very soon. And if anything's changed, the Redskins use both those fields to practice on, which is no problem and there's not been a problem. But I would highly recommend to go with the recreation directors and say, wait till spring. I don't think there should be any reason that he can't unless it's a tax write-off or anything and he wants it for this year.
My thought too is contractors have less work in the fall and it might be easier to find somebody to get there and do it. And it's just less disruption because there's not much going on.
Okay, but what I'm saying is if it's destroyed, then is he going to invest more money in fixing it up? That's my only question and
Didn't it have a seven-year?
I've seen a mess there so many years, I wish I would have pictures. Thank you very much.
It's free. Okay. Any further comment, public comment? Name in five minutes?
Okay. My name is Regina Washington. I'm coming from Senator Betty Jean Alexander's office. Good evening, Mayor in City Council and resident of Dearborn Heights. I have two legislative updates. As everyone knows, the last couple of weeks, Governor Whitmer and Republican leaders has been debating on the state budget and how to raise 2.5 billion annually in revenue for state roads. As of yesterday, the governor has agreed to separate the road funding from the general fund. That will put aside negotiate, negotiations on how to raise 2.5 billion annual in revenue for the state's road and infrastructure. Also, Senator Betty Jean Alexander, Senator Jeremy Moss and Senator Winnie Brinks has introduced legislation to protect consumers from predatory auto insurance. Senate Bill 499 that will ban redlining in Michigan. If you have any questions or concerns, you can contact Senator Betty Jean Alexander at Thank you and have a blessed night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Body and resident Steve Chisholm from State Representative Jewel Jones's office. As you know, some of the stuff works together, so I don't have to talk about the budget because my colleague here already did, so. But I just, one thing I did want to let you guys know is that there was a press conference that happened yesterday in front of where they're building the new Fiat Chrysler Assembly Plant in Detroit on the east side. Not sure if you all saw Channel 2 News or not, but basically the press conference spoke of a bipartisanship bill that's being introduced and it's supposed to help alleviate, or help speed up the expulsion process for low convicted felons or persons that have misdemeanors. As we all have family members, friends and/or neighbors who have once had a semi-dark past or made mistakes in their lives in the past, today they're still having trouble with getting jobs. And they've been clean, if you will, have had a clean life for five, 10 years. So, this is supposed to help speed up that process, so just stay tuned. Like I said, it is bipartisanship. It was senators, state reps, both on the Republican side and the Democratic side who are joining together to try to get this push through. And that's all I have. And, oh, I'm sorry. The numbers to the Capitol or to State Rep's office is 517-373-0849. We look forward to hearing you, hearing from you and addressing any concerns that you may have. Thank you.
Any other public announcements at this, okay, Nancy?
Nancy Brier, Colgate Street. And I just want to invite everybody to our next meeting of the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association, which will be this month on the 26th, the fourth Thursday, 7 to 9 at 3335 South Beach Daily. And our speaker will be our own county commissioner, Diane Webb. So, hope to see you all there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Today is Diane Webb's birthday too, so happy birthday to Diane.
Yes. Any other public announcements? At this point, point of order, please. At this point, I will open it up to public comments. Come up to the podium, state your name and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Angela Venegas. I live on Dwight Street. I was at the city council meeting about a month ago and I brought up this house on Cronin Street. I took pictures of this house. Jack, I did what you asked me. I called you the next day. I left you a message. I haven't heard from you. There's been nothing done about this house again. If you had to live next door to this mess, I think a different response would be in order.
Okay, so I checked with Officer Ortman. He says he speaks to you, if not on a weekly basis, on every other week?
I talked to him about a month ago about this house.
Okay.
Additional other things. Nothing's being done. This is a nine-year process with this house.
Yeah.
You guys have cleaned it up once.
It's next to your brother's. We, we
It's not next to my brother's, it's behind him.
Okay.
This is ridiculous.
It's by
Can you pass it, please?
Okay, and then a year ago, I was here with a board that I gave you guys. This is still the sidewalk on Warren Avenue between Charlesworth and Amboy that we picked up a woman, my husband and I, in a wheelchair who couldn't get by this sidewalk. Take a look at this sidewalk. This is ridiculous. I can't believe this is going on in this city with the amount of taxes that we pay. Your opening statement, Mayor, is about making the city safe for everybody. This is not safe. And what's going on with our roads? I have a list here of things that were supposed to start in August. It's now September and none of these roads have been touched, not one of them. Kids got to ride their bikes and walk to school. There's potholes as big as almost I am on some of these streets that are, and they just keep filling them in and filling them in. And I've called DPW about the sycamore trees in front of my neighbor's house next door to me. These dead branches are hanging over into the street. Is it going to take us a lawsuit and somebody getting killed? Here, look at these. This is a tree. I mean, this is, this is just getting to be ridiculous. Time and time and time again. I keep calling to my house at night. I've verified this, I'm heard, I've called trees now. This is next door to me. We have possums, skunks, raccoons. I can show you pictures on my cell phone of all the animals I've been catching. These are in, over into the power lines. How is this acceptable? This goes like a jungle. And we have to live here. Another sycamore trees. These things are dangerous. Totally green tree last Thursday, I was walking with my dog, it fell right in front of us. Look at these trees. Nothing wrong with that tree, brand new. Nothing wrong with it. Nice green tree. I just don't understand what's going on and why things aren't being taken care of. I mean, it's ridiculous. And this Mayor Puleko, this is the house behind you. I took a picture of this yesterday. How can you live behind this house and not see this mess that's going on in this city? Something needs to be done. The only common denominator of this, all these years that it's gotten bad has been you and I think we need a new mayor. Something needs to be done.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Please come to the microphone, state your name and you have three minutes.
Good evening again, Zohar Abdalha. By now, everybody knows my name. I can spell it and my address. Anyway, I really don't want an apology from, from the mayor because he's never sincere in his apology. And if he called people that kind of names, he shouldn't be upset if people call him this kind of names. But I want to go to the building and safety department. Until now, we don't have director. I sat with the previous director at friend of mine, Hassan Bazzy, in the presence of Addi Salami. And in the presence of the present director, the mayor called him my brother, my best friend, and he praised him up and down and he sits with him at the Sultan every Wednesday for lunch. I just want to open his eyes for what was said. I did ask that director, what do you have on our mayor? You can help me was to remove him from office and I'm not denying it. He said, I will give you his head if you convince Bill Bazzy to retract what he said about me. Think about it, Mayor. And there are two witnesses here to that conversation.
I actually had other, few others approached me with the same offer if I would actually retract my statement. There's actually been almost, almost 10 people that actually approached me, so it wasn't only the three of you.
I've heard it too.
So, a few, a bunch of others that approached me, they said, if I retract my statement and the previous director will give me the mayor and his head on the civil side. I said, you know what? There's current investigation. I'm not going to get into any and I will never retract my statement.
Okay. Next.
Good evening, everybody.
And you did ask for special permission. I did grant you extra time.
Unfortunately, Madam Chair, tonight we talk about the state mitigation grant, which is referred to as 4195DRMI. City of Dearborn Heights had applied for this grant back in 2015, has been approved in 2016. Team approved $2,138,661. They claimed to the government that the project of the cost was going to be $2,853,396. Unfortunately, they should have spaced it with a 30% from the city of Dearborn Heights, which should put them at $714,735. I was one of the people who sold these houses back in 2016. Up until today, I haven't gotten an appropriate appraisal for the house. I have gotten a fake appraisal and I stayed with my word, a fake appraisal. Once we, and once we opened that subject, unfortunately, everything has been deleted online. But sad to let everybody know, you've been deleting stuff online. Very fine, very nice, very simple. As many as you want flash drives, I have them on. Keep deleting, keep shutting, do what you want to do. There's about, out of the 15 houses that have been bought, 15 houses, 15 residents have been scanned by the city till one. The mayor have stated earlier at the study session, he has to keep a $500,000 extra for the floods and for the claims. We haven't gotten anything from you. There's only one prior council member who have gotten $53,000 from the city. Nobody else did. People are still suffering up until today from May 2019 flood. You haven't done nothing. I've gotten calls from residents that Christina Leszlo have told them, you guys are only going to be paying $5,000 for people living along the creek and nobody else is getting nothing. Today, they giving the same totally different story. Can you guys make up your mind? Can we get a clear clarification? Any answer?
What did I say?
You said that the claims have been denied, correct?
Through the attorney, that's the information.
I'm sorry?
Through the city attorney, yes, that's the information.
So, how come Christina Leszlo is telling the resident different stories?
Can't answer that.
Council Miyake, can you answer that?
No, because I'm not familiar with those. Mr. Roberts has and Greg Roberts handles those claims for the city.
Okay, and going back to the FEMA issues, could we get the clear and the actual appraisal that was submitted to the state? I don't need no fake documentation. And a lot of you guys are aware why I'm calling fake documentation. There's no reason to stare at me. It's just an answer.
I don't have an answer.
Why, you shaking, shaking yourself? I need an answer. I'm requesting an answer.
I don't have an answer.
Then what are you doing out here? What's your job? If you don't have an answer, you know what's going on around the city? What are you staying here for? Madam Chair, I'm requesting an answer.
Okay, at this point, we won't push it any further.
Then, how long do I have to wait for?
Madam Chair.
Council Bazzy, do you have a suggestion?
Well, actually, what the mayor recommended, you know, with the whistleblower, I would just call the state police or the FBI.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Bazzy.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, at this time, do I hear a motion? Okay. Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.